Seventeen, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Troy, open. And at this point in time, before we take the roll call, I'm just going to introduce everyone up here to the general public out there, just so you're familiar and comfortable with what everyone does up here and who they are. So I'm gonna start over here to my left, your right. That's Mr. Lambert at the end. This is vice chairman Eisenbacher, who serves as the vice chairman of this board. I'm Glenn Clark. I serve as the chairman. And over here is Mr. Desmond, and then Mr. Agalas. And at the end of the dais here is Mr. Kelsounas, who is an alternate to this board. Because we have at least one other member absent tonight, he will serve as a full voting member of the board here tonight. And over here on the side is Mr. Evans. He serves as our liaison to the city administration, and he will be acting in a staff-supporting capacity here tonight. And then at the end is Mr. Motsney, who during the daytime serves as an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy, and at our meetings here, he serves as our legal advisor. And at this point in time, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to call the roll.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Agalas.
Here.
Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Kelsounas.
Yeah.
Mr. Lambert.
Here. So we do have quorum to operate our official business tonight. We do always allow the petitioners, when we drill down and get to the items on the five area of the agenda, if a petitioner is present and would like to request a postponement until there's a full voting board here, meaning a person who's not absent, they have the right to request that. It doesn't mean that we have to grant it, but we do have, the petitioner has the right to put that formally back in our laps to discuss and consider. So just be aware, our various petitioners here tonight, you can request that if you choose. But we are fully able to operate here tonight. So at this point in time, I'm gonna call on vice chairman Eisenbacher to read our rules and procedures for the public's better understanding of what we do here.
Uh, shoot. It's not on the agenda.
You know, it's not in there. Do you have it?
No, it's page four.
Page four, very good. Yes.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next-door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
So those are our rules and procedures. If you have any questions, when you're at the microphone, you can ask. You cannot call out from the audience and challenge any action of the board. Moving forward, we're gonna move on to item number three, approval of the minutes related to our May 16th meeting. Is there any comments, questions, concerns by a member of the board on this item? Mr. Lambert.
I have approval of the minutes.
A second.
Motion by Lambert and Eisenbacher for approval of the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Mr. Agalas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsounas.
Yeah.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes. Item passes. So now we move on to the approval of the agenda, which is administrative function, and I think Mr. Lambert has something on this side, in this area. Is that correct? Mr. Lambert.
I was going to bring to the board's attention, if they were interested, one of our petitioners has two items on the agenda tonight. Mr. Abathera has one, which is a postponement from last month, which is 71 Birchwood. And then he also has one down farther here, under item D for 979 Bader. And I was considering offering or suggesting to the board that we might want to rearrange the agenda so that Mr. Abathera could have his items considered consecutively.
Meaning items A and B rearranged to items A and B?
Correct.
Is there any concern by a member of the board on that? If not, that will be our agenda, which is set now for the evening. So if you are, if you were item B, you are now pushed down to one item below it. And we just generally like to, if a person's here, they shouldn't, you know, be all over the agenda for several items. So at this point in time, we did move right into our hearings of cases, and the first one has been before us last month, and is related to 71 Birchwood. Mr. Evans, would you like to present to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is subject property at 71 Birchwood. On the overhead, in front of the room, I've got an aerial of the neighborhood. The subject property is located in an area north of East Maple and east of Livernoy. It's circled there in red. 71 Birchwood's on the north side of Birchwood, just east of Livernoy. Almost all the property you see in this aerial is used as single-family residential, the exception being the properties along Livernoy, which are commercial or office. The subject matter of the request was to create a lot split, to create two new parcels. The zoning ordinance requires that any new parcels in this district be at least 7,500 square feet, and the proposed lot split will result in two parcels being 7,200 square feet in area. And this is the amended site plan. As the chairman mentioned, this matter was heard before the board at our May meeting, and the zoning board postponed the matter. The applicant offered some modifications to his proposal, which included landscaping, setbacks, and height of the houses. So he's put, provided those modifications in the revised site plan, which you see here. And I put those colors in just to give everybody a visual of what he wants to do. And he's provided a documentation for the board explaining what he's going to do. So in order to proceed with that lot split and put up two homes, he's going to need a variance from this board on the lot area. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So are there any questions of our staff or our legal advisor, or the board members, before we go to the petitioner? Seeing none, we can call the petitioner forward, and if you're a member of the general public and want to address the board on this, I see we have a lot of signatures here. We're gonna get to you, so don't worry about that. Everyone's gonna be heard here tonight, so that's not an issue. So, but we're gonna let the petitioner go first, and then we'll go to the general public. Good evening.
Good evening. I brought back the revisions that we talked last month about. I think you asked about moving the houses in from each side over there. So we moved it nine feet on each outside and kept the houses closer together on the inside. And the way Mr. Eisenbacher wanted to know about the trees to be saved, and we talked about the trees that could be saved, the black walnut in the back, the spruce in the middle is gonna have to be removed, but the tree in the front can, will also stay. The other thing I did is that we lowered the height of the house. I thought Mr. Evans could put it up on the overhead, but he told me he couldn't. I just have a couple copies I could drop off to you, just to show you the heights that we have there. The original plan we had showed the houses as being extremely tall by the pictures, so we lowered them down. We reduced the pitch of the houses. So we should be, the house to the west of us is probably like 29, 29 foot six tall, and we're gonna be three, four feet shorter than that when we're finished. The ordinance required, allows you to go to 30 feet tall, so we're gonna stay down below that to, to take less effect in the area. Other than that, I am here to answer any more questions you might have, and what we're looking to do.
Are there any questions of the petitioner, or a member of the board? So the original plan on the outside, where the house was gonna be how close to the lot?
The house was gonna be five and a half to six feet off the outside edges.
And now nine to nine?
Now they're gonna be nine, nine to nine foot six.
And how far between the two proposed new ones?
Six feet between each one, for a total of 12. The code requires five and 10. I can push it a little bit more, but I like to say a little bit of a cushion in case the walls aren't exactly where they're supposed to be. We're not looking, you know, less than five feet difference in there. So by doing that, we're pulling away from both existing houses there and keeping it all into the, the new homes that are, that are close together. And then, as you seen on plans, we lowered the roof of the house and dropped it that way. I did talk to the neighbor behind me again about maybe some landscaping trees there, and he, you know, very friendly, but just not really interested in trees, but I said, you know, it's something we can plant to hide anything.
Okay.
All right.
Any other member of the board?
Yes. Was there hardship now in this case here? Why you wanna, why you want us to do that?
Why do I want you to grant the variance?
Yeah.
The, the property is 120 feet wide, and the only-
I mean, besides monetary issues, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, we're providing homes, you know, for younger families that can move in the area there. If we build one house in there, it's gonna have to be a very, very large house with probably a three or four-car garage on it. It's gonna be taller, bigger, to try to maximize the lot of the area of the house. Because one house can go up. It's gonna be a tall, big house, three-car garage. It's not gonna fit the characteristics of the neighborhood. All the houses in the neighborhood are 40s, 60s, and 80-foot lots. And we're gonna have a-
Yeah, but right here, the 50% of the houses, you know, bigger than the little ones.
It's changing in the area. The, the older houses are being bought up. When the value starts rising in the neighborhood, the older houses have become more valuable for people to purchase them, tear them down, and big up, build a bigger house. Some of the houses were built, I would imagine, in the 40s and the 50s. And it's just, it's growing up in the city.
Well, why you can build one house, big?
I don't think-
If you pay 50% of the houses there bigger, you probably, you know, you can sell one house.
Sell one very large house, it's not gonna fit the characteristics of the neighborhood.
It seems to me like the neighbors, you got a lot of segments here, they're rejected.
Well, I just got letter two, and it's kinda saying that it's objecting to a rezoning. And this isn't a rezoning. And the people got a apartment complex put down right on Livernoy's on them, with 32 or 34 units on there.
I understand you've been here before, and you have similar, you know, situation.
For this type of-
And I don't feel comfortable, you know, being here every time, you know, you find a lot like that to be habitual, you know, to bend the rules here, to have somebody-
I don't think I might-
To create to, you know.
And the other project I had wasn't a house like this, a lot like this. It was a zoning ordinance, that they changed the zoning ordinance, and I was here for that. And that was a, originally, I started the house, and it was a five and 10, and now they changed it in the zoning ordinance to be a 10 and 10.
I understand. But you don't own the property way back there, right?
I don't, no. This is the only piece I own.
So you bought after the zoning, so you know what you were buying, I guess.
Yeah, and as I said last time, I've-
All right. Thank you very much.
And I, I did think the lot was big enough when I bought it. I did not buy it to say, oh, I can get it split. If you look in the whole subdivision, this is the, this street and next street, and only two lots that are 120 feet deep. Everything else is 130. Thank you.
Any other member of the board for the petitioner? You can have a seat, please. Thank you. So at this point in time, we are going to ask the public to share your thoughts with us. So I'm gonna open the public hearing on this matter, and if you are a person who is interested in addressing the board, please step forward. Just identify yourself and your relationship to the property, if any. Like, I live across the street, I live down the street, and I back up to it, just to give us, or you can even share your address with us, if you'd like.
Denise Whibley, and I live at 76 Vermont, which is right behind the property.
Okay. Good evening.
First of all, we wanna say thank you, my husband and I, for allowing us to have the time to, you know, canvass the neighborhood and see what was the real thought on, on this happening in the neighborhood, because it's happening more and more. And it, well, it was a positive, but you can see by the number of signatures that we received, that it was positive that every, the ones that signed felt that it was a crowding issue. You know, it's like houses are being designed to be huge, you know, and then they're just being crowded in at the limits of the property. And it tends to be overwhelming to the little guys, you know, the rest of us. And there are, I don't know, they're dotted, you know, like all over the neighborhood and stuff, but this tended to, was like a real crowding issue. And we appreciate the, you know, the changes that Gary's made. We have, you know, that, that's great. But we all thought that, you know, there would be one house on this property, and two is a bit overwhelming, so. And we know that the decision is yours, so we just appreciate your, your time to let us, you know, see what the real representation in the neighborhood was. And that was it. All that we, there were lots of different reasons why, which, you know, I'm not allowed to speak for anybody else. I wish people would come and speak for their self and say what the reasons were, but that's about it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question for you before you go.
Mr. Agalas.
Is your concern that the lot sizes will be too small, or that the houses will be too big, or both?
Or, yeah, both.
Both, basically?
Yeah, the houses are just like, they're monstrous, you know, compared to us. They, they really, they're just overwhelming to the people that live in normal houses. You know, it's like, we know that there's gonna be progress, and there's gonna be development, and, but for every house that gets knocked down, that, and then two are put in its place, then you, you know, you have increased everything, actually. You have increase in traffic, you have increase in the population in the area, and it's just, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot more of these things happening, so.
So hypothetically?
Yeah.
If the variance isn't granted, and the developer decides to build an even bigger house, how would you feel about that? But it's only one house.
Well, I don't think that we have really anything to say about that, because that's what we asked for, was one house. You know, and we know that that's, it's not our property, it's not our decision, that's, you know, your decision, but yeah, one house would be nice bit. From what I understand, Gary said that would be like massive, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to, uh-
One thing, we appreciate, you know, you allowing us really for this extra time. Okay?
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
If I may. Looking at the, the map, that's page 13 of our packet, if we could. Yeah. So the house in the center of the, the shape is the-
That's 71.
Yeah, 71. And it's, if we look at the prior slide, you can see that it was originally platted as three properties.
Right, they're 40-foot lots.
Yep.
We have two. That's three.
Yeah, behind it, right. You have two of them.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And then I noticed just adjacent to it, to the east, there's also three sites that have been split the exact same way for 85 and 95.
Where's that?
So they're like one and a half each. So if you're looking at the map, the two houses next to it, 85 and 95?
Correct. Those have been there forever.
Right, but they're the same size that he's requesting.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
Well, those houses are no near the size that the houses that are going, you know, proposed to go on 71. I mean-
He's not asking for a variance on the house size, he's only-
Yeah, I understand that. But that, that's what we're saying, you know? I understand, you know, it's like lots of the houses are built on 60-foot lots, but the houses that are built there don't take up the majority of the lot. You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll call forward the next person who likes to, would like to address the board. This board cannot, does not have the power to deny, or to stop the developer's ability to build that larger home. That would be an issue for the zoning ordinance, or the building and zoning ordinance for the city that comes through planning, that comes through the city council. And so if anyone wants to address us, in the end, we're gonna try and narrow the conversation to the variance request in front of us, and it's fine, because there are different ways that this parcel could go. I understand that. But we've dealt with this before, and then sometimes we hear no, and no. We don't like the petitioner's request, and then we don't like the other possible reality to the property. And at the end of the day, we, I've been on this board for a long time. Just because the developer says I could take it to a certain size, doesn't mean that the market will bear that, especially in an older neighborhood. So once again, that's really a moot point here for anybody else who'd like to address the board on this matter. But if you would, please come forward, if you wanna address the board on this petitioner's request. Okay. So I will close the public hearing on that matter, and I'm gonna ask the vice chairman Eisenbacher to read communications to us on this item.
Okay.
Both electronically, and what came in through the mail, or dropped off to Mr. Evans' office.
Right. We had one letter in favor that was emailed to us for the last meeting, that was the previous owner of the property. We had another letter on the table in front of us at the last meeting. We have a letter, and that was in opposition. We had a letter in our packet that was in opposition. We had three speakers at the last meeting. Taking all the addresses into account, we also have a petition, and not counting duplicate, I came up with 32 properties in opposition.
Okay.
Not to get any duplicates.
Thank you very much. So we will bring this item back to the board for discussion, further inquiry of staff, or a motion for consideration of either approval or a rejection of the petitioner's request. Those are options at this point in time. Would anyone like to be recognized? Vice chairman Eisenbacher?
Okay. Speaking through our criteria for approval or denying. First one, A, exceptional characteristics of the property for which the variance is sought shall make compliance with dimensional requirements substantially more difficult than would be the case for the great majority of properties in the same zoning district. Characteristics of property which shall be considered include exceptional narrowness, shall, narrowness, shallowness, smallness, irregular shape, topography, vegetation, and other similar characteristics. The only exceptional characteristic I see for this property is the fact that it was originally platted as three. Now he's requesting a, a split into one and a half each from the original plating. Item B, characteristics which make compliance with the dimensional requirements difficult must be related to the premises for which the variance is sought, and not some other location. That is the case. C, characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements shall not be of a personal nature. It's not personal, it's with the land. D, characteristic which makes compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or the previous owner. It was not created by the property owners because they didn't get involved with the zoning changes after, years after the property was platted. And E, proposed variance will not be harmful or alter essential character of the area in which the property is located, and will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other aspect affect the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. This is the one that appears to be difficult for us. He is taking into consideration the height, and he is gonna comply with the zoning ordinances relative to setbacks that are set up for allowing the light and air to adjacent properties. The question is, is the essential character of the area in which the property is located? The city provided us with dimensional analysis of the property, of the entire subdivision that was created originally, which is on page 17 of our packet. 280 parcels, average frontal, frontal, frontage area of 58.3 feet, standard deviation of 26 feet, high standard deviation, average area of 8,700 square feet, and again, a very large standard deviation of 4,400. And then on the previous three pages is analysis of all the adjacent prop, of all the, immediately adjacent properties. Forty-two, forty-two immediately adjacent parcels, and they had an average of 54 feet of frontage, with a standard deviation of 25, again, large. Average area of 7,500 square feet, with a standard deviation of 3,900 square feet, again, very large. So there's a big diversity of properties in this neighborhood. Which makes it a very difficult item to analyze.
I think that's the most you've ever shared since you've been on this board. Good information, for sure. Thank you very much. Is there a member of the board who would like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert?
I wondered if you wanted to give the petitioner an opportunity to delay action on this, 'cause we don't have a full board tonight.
I do believe in freedom of speech, and he was at the podium, and I made that offer, but if he'd like to come back and request that again, we will give that leniency. So I imagine he would have spoken up. It's not been the first rodeo in this auditorium for him, but would you like, if you are gonna speak, you have to come to the microphone.
Will there be a full board next month?
It's never guaranteed. You don't know.
You know, I wouldn't mind waiting one month, so maybe I can go talk to some of the neighbors, you know, with the petition, because some of the people that were signed there that I talked to said they were, they were fine with it. And I'm not going anywhere anytime soon with the property, so 30 days is not gonna affect me. If, if it's okay with the board, I would like to wait 30 days to, to meet with all the people on the street, just to maybe have a clarification, maybe we can have them write their decision on a piece of paper that I can, you know? So I would like to request a 30-day delay, if that's all right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would any member like to be recognized for any motion, further inquiry? Mr. Lambert?
I hate to drag out the meeting, especially considering the neighbors that have to force them to come back to another meeting, but bas- them to come back to another meeting, but based upon the fact that we don't have a full board tonight, I would move that we postpone consideration until our next meeting.
There's been a motion made for postponement on this item for one month. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Desmond seconds. Is there discussion? If not, we'll prepare for a vote, please.
Okay, and this motion would postpone the matter to the board's July eighteenth meeting. There'll be no additional notification if the motion passes. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Agawis?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes, so the item will be back before us in July at the regularly scheduled meeting. So there isn't any further action or conversation on that agenda for tonight. We move right on to item B, which is related to the same petitioner, nine seven nine Batter. Mr. Evans, could you please share with us on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is for property at nine seven nine Batter. I have some overheads on the projector here. The subject property is located on the north side of Batter, east of Rochester Road. Batter is the southern city boundary. Across the street is Clausen. And here's the close-up of the neighborhood. The, all the properties you see in the aerial is own integrated industrial business. Most of the uses are industrial in nature. Subject matter involves an addition that's proposed for the building, and this is the site plan with Batter on the bottom. We show the existing building in the middle of the site plan, and surrounded, or outlined in red, rather, is the proposed addition. The zoning ordinance requires that buildings or additions to the buildings be at least ten feet away from the side property line, in this case, the east property line. And the building is proposed to be three feet away from the side property line. So in order for the applicant to proceed with the addition as planned, he needs a variance from the ten-foot required side yard setback. The applicant has provide us, the board, rather, a proposed elevation of the final product. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Evans, a board member? Okay, we are gonna call the same petitioner forward to us to address on this matter, and take it away.
Thank you again for, for hearing from me. I have owned the building at nine seven nine Batter now since nineteen ninety-nine. Seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. The person directly to the east of me just put a big addition on his building, made a huge improvement. I don't know if you've driven down the street, but it's a, the street needs a lot of help sometimes, and, you know, we've been working on trying to, to clean it up and make it look a little bit better. The difficult part is Clausen is directly south of us on the other half of the street, so we're the only industrial part on the south side there. And the way the building was built, in order to put an addition on it, I could, I can't go out in the back, 'cause I'd lose all the parking spots that we have in there, and I can't come out the front, 'cause you have to have so much green space in the building there. So I talked to planning and talked to Brett, and we talked about coming out the side there. Numerous buildings you see next door to me, behind me, they're all built either on the lot line, one foot, two foot, or three foot off. The building directly to the west of me, that's three feet off. The building behind me is on the lot line, actually, both buildings are on the lot line. And the one behind me to the west is on one foot or two foot off the lot line there. The way the, back in the fifties, sixties when they built, they, they were putting those in, they might even been earlier than that. So I'm looking, the reason I want to put addition on is I like to park my, I'm purchasing a motorhome, I like to park it inside and not park it in my backyard. So that's my reason for wanting this. I own the building on Elmsford also, that's north of it, that I use for my, for my business. The gentleman that owns the building to the east, like I say, he just added a huge addition to it, and that's the reason why I came in so quickly, is 'cause his new parking lot would be coming right up to my building. We're trying to avoid having parking lot next parking lot with a big fence between it. The building would be more of a, of a privacy fence and to keep his equipment safe. I don't, don't have anything else. We won't affect anything in the front. We'll be in the front yards, rear yard, and the other side will all be within the city codes on it. The size of the building is not oversized for the property, and there's ample parking for the building. Is there any other questions I can answer?
What's the building gonna be constructed of?
It'll be a block building with a wood roof on it. I put a new roof on the building two years ago, a truss roof with a shingles, so the new roof will be match the existing on the old one the same way.
Does it have fire suppression?
Does not have fire suppression. It's not large enough to, but it'll have a firewall and a two-hour rating on the east wall.
So the...
Yes.
The setback wall will be fireproof?
The east wall that's three feet off the lot line will be fire, will be, it's an S-two building, so it'll have a two-hour firewall rating on that side.
Okay.
And the sixteen-foot walls will be all block, and then the trusses up top will have the fire rating to them.
Any other member? Okay, if you could have a seat, please. Thank you. Call for the public hearing on this matter, so if you'd like to address the board on this matter, please come forward to the microphone. Seeing that there isn't anyone coming forward, close the public hearing and turn it over to Vice Chairman Eisenbacher for communications.
We have one communication in favor, which is adjacent property that was placed, or is in the packet. Lost the page. And if I may continue?
Yes, sir.
Looking again at our five criteria for approval or denial. I believe the item A, the exceptional characteristic, is again, the change in the zoning from when this industrial district was set up. It was set up at a different time when buildings were allowed to be right on the property line, which is the characteristic of that neighborhood. Again, they're block with fire resistance. B, it is related to the property. C, it's not of a personal nature, it's related to the property. D, the problem was not created by current or the previous owner, it was created by the zoning changes and how the original building was placed. E, the difficult one, in my estimation, based on the viewing of that neighborhood, it is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood because it is an industrial area with high utilization of the lots. And the one property that would potentially be impacted is in favor of the, of the change. Is that a motion? If, if there's no one to speak in opposition, I would move to approve the request. I'll second.
Moved by Eisenbacher and Desmond. Any discussion on this matter? We just inquire of Mr. Evans. So, so the petitioner mentioned, I think, I don't wanna quote him, but one property line, or the building came right, right up, so there was zero feet setback, and one was about three feet, which was similar to his request, and one may have been even less than three feet. Can you confirm, confirm all that?
No, we haven't confirmed it.
Okay. So... I would just... It's difficult for me for not having the city being able to confirm that. I don't really think that there's a lot in question based on the, you know, the diagrams we have up on the screen, but it would be nice to have confirmation on that. And somebody requesting us to allow them to break the zoning laws. You have something, Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yeah, the request is to be...
They're requesting us to break the law, so therefore I'm just feeling like it needs to be a little bit more...
Right. The request, the request is to be three feet from the property line instead of ten feet. So it's not immediately adjacent, but...
Right.
It is three feet off the property line where other properties in that industrial neighborhood are on the property line with their buildings, with the aerial map that just pulled up. The one directly behind to the east, and the one directly behind and two to the west are both on the property line.
Now, Mr. Chair, I would like to say, these are depictions of where the property lines are. Anyone, whether it's the city or a private property owner who wants to confirm the location of a structure relative to the property line, we recommend having a surveyor come out and do that. These, these lines may be accurate, but they may not be, these lines are overlaid based on property descriptions, and the photos are taken from high up in the air. We find them relatively close, but that's the reality of it.
So amend that to be, appear to be.
That might be a safe thing to say.
Mr. Motzey, do you have anything to add on, on that?
Uh, no, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, there's a standing motion in front of us, and if there's any other discussion, I'll allow that person to speak. If not, I guess we're prepared to vote. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agawis?
No.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
So motion passes. Congratulations. You have your variance request, and we will see you back next month. So we move to item C, which was item B. This is related to Karen Mead, three zero two three Oak Hill. Mr. Evans, could you please share this information with us?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And this is a variance to allow an at-grade generator, which at-grade means on the ground in the front yard. The zoning ordinance allows them only in the side or rear yards. Now, the subject property is a residential property located just north of Big Beaver and adjacent to Adams Road, three zero two three Oak Hill. It's the second house in. And all the property and all the subject property in the area is used for single-family residential. Now, this is the spec sheet of the generator that they're proposing to put in in the front. The dimensions are forty-eight inches wide, excuse me, twenty-four, forty-eight in length, twenty-five wide, and twenty-nine inches high. Now, this is the front of the house and the circled areas where they propose to put the generator. They wanna put it either here to the left of the window or here to the right of the window. So in order to proceed to put it there, they need a variance from this board to put it in the front yard. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Any questions of city staff?
Yeah, what's the distance between, you know, I said the front yard is way, you know, farther than the back?
You wanna know, what was the question?
The distance between the front and, and the front of the street. This is the front, right? Okay. Yeah, that's right. What's the distance between the house and the street?
We could give an estimate if you allow me just a few minutes to pull up the GIS.
Well, that's all I have.
I think there's a survey in page thirty-eight.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too.
Page thirty-eight?
Yeah.
I don't think the dimension is necessarily there.
It looks like seventy feet from the page. I'm looking at page thirty-eight.
Is it called out there on page thirty-eight?
I, I could be reading the wrong thing, but I'm, I'm seeing seventy.
No, let's take a look. Okay, right. Well, let me show this. There's the survey. Oak Hill's at the bottom. The garage is over here to the right of the survey, but it does show seventy feet to the edge of the road from the southeast corner of the house.
Any other questions of staff?
Chairman?
Mr. Lambert?
Are there, are there any city rules or ordinances that pertain to generators as far as any kind of enclosure around them?
Well, we do require screening to be either a four-season vegetation or some sort of material that's compatible with the architecture of the house.
Okay, so if we were to approve the variance, he would still have to provide that in front of the generator?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can call the petitioner forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight.
Please identify yourself and your relationship to the property.
Karen Mead, three zero two three Oak Hill Drive, and I am the homeowner.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So why do you want a generator in the front yard?
Okay, I do have a hardship. I'm on a slab, and the, the only access I have is my attic, which is in a garage, and I have rough a standard pull-down ladder-type steps to get to the attic. If the generator cannot be placed in the front yard and it has to go into the back, the mechanicals have to be run into the attic. There's no basement to run them. It's going to impede my access to my attic. The gas lines are gonna run extremely close. It could be a trip hazard, higher risk of rupturing if you're, it's my only storage. So if I'm in and out of there several times in a month or throughout the year, I'm having to step over gas lines, and that's the primary reason I'm asking for it. My intentions are, I've been looking at screening. In fact, I've lost a lot of vegetation this year. You can tell by the pictures. I've had all of, all of my landscaping torn out, and I have four landscape companies on standby. Once I get the approval for the generator in the front yard, they'll be working with me to screen it. And I can not only screen it right there in front of the garage, but across the sidewalk, I can put hedging in that will be additional buffering. But I did wanna point out as well that the generator decibel, when it's in quiet test mode, it's roughly fifty-seven decibels. It's not much more than some of your loud dishwashers. Now, obviously, if we lose power and it's running for a week, you're looking at about sixty-five decibels, be a little bit louder. But I do believe the evergreen shielding will take care of that. There's a company called Tric, T-R-I-C-C. I've already done research. They actually have faux evergreen that sits on a cage that places over it, so it's easy to lift off for maintenance, still allows the airflow, and then on the street side of the sidewalk, I would do some type of ninety-degree evergreen shielding that would add additional sound buffering. And the few neighbors I've talked to, I don't know if you have any opposition, but those neighbors, they weren't opposed, at least they told me. Only one asked if I was gonna try to screen it. Her only concern was looking at it, and she wasn't even directly across the street. So again, my primary reason is the hardship for access to the attic and safety with the gas lines.
Okay, so that would be the only other option would be to, for the placement, would be that other placement in the back?
Yes. Well, it could go on either side of the garage. You know, I've got the gas meter, that's exposed. That, that was, the house was built in fifty-five or fifty-six, I believe, and the gas meter's exposed because they have to get to it to read it. It could go on either side of that. My only other option really was in the back, and the way they run the mechanicals, either way, if you were to look to the south toward Big Beaver, I don't know if you have that picture or not. I sent several. Or if you look at the survey. If I put it on the south side of the home, it's going to, it, it's gonna be close to the other neighbor, and again, the problem is, it's gonna have to run the entire length of the attic. The attic access is to the right where you see that garage. The attic access is to the right where you see that garage. See the twenty-four by twenty-four seven, that's the driveway. It's a side-entry garage and the attic access is in there. So, if that line has to be run, it's going to run directly across whether it goes to the back or whether it goes to the side based on where the meter and the gas meter and the electric meter is. That's what I've been advised by Bowen Electric. We were up there trying to assess the best way to run it and they have to use a larger ID of mechanicals as well because of, you know, running it up there. So, ideally, it would be installed next to the gas meter. The electric meter is right on the side of the home where that twenty-four is by the driveway. And I don't have addresses. My understanding is there's been variances for front yard over on Caswell and Kingsley, which is maybe four or five blocks east. Again, I don't have the addresses to provide that, but I've been told that the city's allowed those variances before. Again, my hardship is the access to the attic and I'm a single homeowner, so it's me. I'm up and down those stairs and I don't want to be tripping or rupturing the line. So, that's my primary concern. And I've done a lot of work to the home. I've had a new driveway put in. I've had a lot of work around it and my intention is to pretty up that front yard. The vegetation was all fifty years old, was the original shrubbery. It's all died. So, I know I can do a lot to mask that and it will not be an eyesore for the road.
Okay. I would say that I've never seen a front yard variance request come before this board for all the years I've been on it, so that could have been a long time ago, but when somebody else was in this seat, but not since I've been here. And I know that we don't have any communications on it from neighbors, but I think the reason why the city put it in the ordinance to begin with is that aesthetically, that's not very pleasing as people are walking the neighborhood or driving through to consider perhaps even purchasing a house next door. So, that was the reason I asked the question.
I don't have enough copies. May I approach and give you an example? This was not included in the packet.
Mm-hmm. And then I'll go to the record.
This is just one.
You have to speak at the microphone.
This is just one example of what you can do with the generator. Now, I don't have a hatch going to a basement, but I pulled that off. That's made by Tric and it is not cheap. It is very expensive, but I'm willing to do what I have to do to camouflage it. And the beauty of that evergreen is it's a wire cage that goes over the generator and it allow, it's wide wire, so it allows the airflow and then that is faux greenery for that piece. So, the generator will not be in plain view. It will look like a shrub from the street, but then again, if you look across from the sidewalk where you have the three-foot concrete on this side or the street side of that concrete, I can put evergreen or shrubs as well and that will cover it. They will not see it. So, anyone driving by will not know unless it's running.
Is the backstory that you lost power like I did this past winter?
You know, with all of the trees, you know, it's a very mature area. I lose my power three and four times per year there and it's not just for a day. They're usually about three to four days minimum, so.
Any other members for this petitioner? Mr. Lambert.
Kind of interesting. I don't expect, pretend to be an expert on the way houses are designed, but that they put the meters in the front of the house. When you purchased the house, did they explain to you, did they do that because of the configuration of the property or did they ever address that with you?
I bought, we, my late husband and I bought the house in ninety-four. The meter was there, the gas meter in the front of the house. There was a big evergreen that was in front of it and it died, so it was pulled out. And again, I held off replacing anything until I find out if I'm going to get the variance, but then the electric meter's right on the side of the house by the side-entry door into the kitchen. But there's never been any explanation, but you know, it was the fifties, they called them executive ranches back then. I guess they were quite something in the fifties. A beautiful lot, beautiful property over there, so.
Thank you.
But no explanation given.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I will open the public hearing on this matter and call any member of the public to the microphone who would like to speak to the board on this item. Seeing none, we'll close out the public hearing, bring it back to the board for communications, which I think the vice chairman indicated there weren't any. So, we're good on that front and bring it back to the board's attention. Is there a board member who'd like to be recognized on this item? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the information provided by the petitioner and the information provided by city staff, looking at all the criteria we have for practical difficulty, the unusual shape of the property, which may have necessitated the placement of the gas meter in front of the house, the fact we have no opposition from the neighbors, I'm going to move that we approve the variance.
Before I second by another member, would you be amenable to putting language in there for proper screening, even though Mr. Evans makes it an indication that's required? We can be more specific and we can be very clear about our intentions.
The variance be approved with the requirement that the city-required screening be placed around the generating unit.
With, I think the petitioner mentioned about evergreen. I think it's important to consider that. I'm glad you mentioned that. I think they should formally put it in. As we know, we have horrible winters here and plants lose their ability to shield and screen, so an evergreen would not have that same issue. So, is that part of your motion?
It sounds good.
Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Mr. Desmond seconds it. Is there a discussion by a member of the board on a motion for approval? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, you have your variance. Okay, we move on to item number D, which was item C, related to 3320 Ellenboro. Mr. Evans, can you please share on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This subject property on Ellenboro is located in an area north of Big Beaver and east of Livernoy. Specifically, it's located on the east side of Ellenboro. Every property you see in the overhead is used for single-family residential. Subject matter involves proposal of building a new detached garage at the rear of the property. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. Ellenboro is on the left, the house is in the middle, and outlined in red is the proposed location of the detached garage. Now, the city code requires that detached garages be at least six feet away from property lines. The applicant is proposing that this garage be zero feet away from the rear property line. So, in order to proceed, he needs approval from this board. He has provided us several elevations of what the garage will look like. And I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any questions? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Evans, could you address the email that you received from Mr. Grusnick concerning the compliance with the Michigan residential code?
Yes, I've got that up on the screen now. And he does indicate that the building code would allow structures less than five feet from a property line, provided that the portions of the structures less than five feet have a minimum one-hour fire-resistant wall, soffit, roof, and it's required on both sides of the walls. Now, he does mention that the plans don't include a side-hinged egress door, commonly referred to as the man door, the door that people would walk through, and the code's going to require that. So, if he's approved tonight, he's going to need to put that in. Well, even if he's not approved tonight and he builds it elsewhere, he's going to put it in. He does indicate that the roof over hanging soffit would encroach onto the adjacent property to the east based on the design and that the code, while it doesn't require a maintenance plan for access to the east wall, he recommends it's a good idea to either have an easement recorded or better yet, just provide a setback to allow existing or future owners, if they need to do any maintenance to the outside of that wall, paint it, repair damage, whatever it might be. I've discussed this with the building official Mitch and, you know, owners can change and if there's no reasonable access, that could become a problem down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other members of the board like to be?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Evans, what is the space to the west behind the outlined red for 3320?
That's a discrepancy. I shouldn't say discrepancy. The aerial map has not been updated in comparison to the actual property description.
So, that's still his lot back there?
This actually, this site plan actually shows it and referring to what you're looking at, I've tried to estimate in red outline the approximate location of that. Actually, this property here, the back, I can't remember how many feet it was according to assessing, actually now belongs to the resident, appears to belong to the resident or at least the development to the east. So, the red section is a depiction of the actual lot lines as recorded right now.
So, the structure would butt up against the red line, not up against the entirety? So, it's not right up against that neighboring property, correct?
It's not back here. It's over here, right.
All right, I just was just wondering. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eisenbacher?
That, it looks like a residual property. Is that a detention basin?
I didn't see any information that would suggest that. I don't think that property was developed as part of the development to the east. I think it was, this parcel was created after.
Okay.
Any other member? We'll call the petitioner forward. Please identify yourself and state your relationship to the property and question, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Austin Mataro, the homeowner of the property.
Welcome.
Thanks. So, yeah, we're requesting a variance to put the garage at zero feet to the rear property line. So, there was a question about what that land is behind. That's just a buffer zone between the neighboring house and my house, so there's not going to be anything built there. It's just open land. The reason for the variance was we have a catch basin in the backyard that's going to impede the foundation of the garage and also the neighbors would like it closer to the lot line so that there isn't garbage behind it, so keep the neighbors happy. Yeah, not much more to add unless you have any questions.
Can you address Mr. Grusnick's memo? Did you see that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're going to add the side access door, add the fire rating parts of the structure and then might have to move it back a little bit for maintenance, maybe a foot or two. It is going to be a brick side, so there shouldn't be really any maintenance on it. But yeah, I don't see any issues with the memo he wrote. I think we should be able to meet all those requirements.
But not by your variance request? It states quite clearly a zero-foot setback. It doesn't say a one-foot setback. It doesn't say two feet. It says zero.
Well, yeah, the issues with, I guess, with the maintenance of the side of the garage there is I might have to do some type of easement or some type of setback to address those concerns, so.
Okay. Any other member for the petitioner? Mr. Agalas?
Quick, basic question. So, the house already has a garage, right?
Attached garage, yeah.
How big is that attached garage?
I believe it's approximately six hundred square feet. I don't know the exact dimensions of that. It's a three-car garage.
Three-car garage?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
That property behind your house, do you know who owns it?
Yeah, I do. I believe the owner of that is actually at the meeting tonight, so if you have any questions for him, we can call him up.
And then, is your house in a subdivision? Are there any, do you know if there's any deed restrictions?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And yeah, we're going to build the garage either way, it's just where is it going to be, so.
And can you just address to me, sir, again, you said something about, something being in the way that that's why you had to put it to the very far reaches of your property line?
Yeah, if you could pull up that drawing.
Basin or something?
Yeah, the catch basin, yeah. So, you see those two dots there? It's a catch basin and there's a drain line that runs between them and it's right where the foundation of the garage would be. So, that's the main reason for moving it back.
I just, I live, my property abuts property that can't be built on either. It's owned by the city, I believe. It's a spill basin and I would not ever think to want to, if my garage ever went up in smoke, that I would be able to push my replacement all the way up against the property line, even if there isn't a neighbor right behind me, which I don't have a neighbor. It's a spill basin. The variance requests, the variance setbacks are there for a good reason, obviously, to keep neighbors from being on top of each other, but you do have that open area, secondly, for maintenance. So, I would think that you'd have to readdress that formally now at this point in time about what your new proposal is. I can open up the public hearing and then have you come back, but I mean, you sound like you're amenable to that, but why don't you do that at this time?
Yeah, yeah, if the maintenance is an issue, I guess for future homeowners that parcel to the east, I'd request for a one or two-foot setback to allow for any of that maintenance.
Because you can't go on other people's property to do work on your own house. That's, that's the issue there, I think, so. All right, is there another member who'd like to be recognized? If not, sir, if you can have a seat, we're going to open up the public hearing on this matter and call any member of the public forward to address this issue before us.
Good evening. Gary Abathera. I'm the owner of 3301 Mirage. I am the neighbor to the east. If you could pull that right there, my house is directly to the east. That hundred feet is a buffer, just a side yard, so it won't be built on. I suggested to my neighbor, I prefer to see it built on the lot line because then I know everybody likes to store their garbage behind their garage, ladders, this weeds grow up, trees, everything grow up there. And I'd be looking at the side of his garage. I'd much rather see it as close to the lot line as possible so I don't have to put up a privacy fence. We're going to put up a few trees to buffer everything. I think being closer, I suggested to the lot line and after I saw the memo from Mitch that there's no maintenance in there, I said, no problem, I can give you a maintenance, you know, agreement, but then I talked to my attorney and I have to go through, since my house is in a subdivision, that's a site condo, I have to re-amend the master deed and redo all that, which would just be nine months into planning and thousands of dollars to have that done. So, and I understand what you say, that there are times people move, these people move, those, that, you know, he suggested to me, we move it two feet off. I think that's more than enough room to get in there to do any kind of maintenance that he needs on it. I'm going to donate the brick to him, the brick that whole wall, so when I'm looking outside of my house, I'm looking at a thirty-some-foot-long brick wall instead of, you know, six feet of other stuff in there. So, I'm the only, I feel I'm the only neighbor who's affected by it the most because I'm looking at it every time I come out of my garage during the day and at night and I think it's a great, a great thing to have it there far. If you go back to the other page, you can see where the drainage lines were, the two catch basins that are in there. You know, he, his house is not in a site condo. It's in just a regular plat, so he can put the garage up. I think the code says six hundred square feet. If he moved it six feet off the lot line, he would be right on the edge of that drain that was required by the city when the house was built. It comes all the way out to Ellenboro, runs all the way down and then across. Those are the two lowest points of the property. So, everything from the house drains that way and everything from the back drains that way. So, he can't relocate the drains because then he'd So he can't relocate the drains, because then he'd have a flood problem of draining everything in there. So as being his neighbor, I think it's a great thing to get him as close to the lot line as possible. I know you commented that the paper says zero feet to the lot line. I don't know if you're anywhere between zero and six, because you're not going, you can't get any closer to the lot line, you don't have to redo the whole thing again. I'm not, I'm not sure how that works in this area.
Okay.
I'm going to answer any questions if anybody has, yes, sir.
Did you consider selling him a couple feet of the back of this little lot?
Once again, I would have to go through the mortgage company to get split.
This is part of the site condominium complex?
This is part of the site condominium, yes. So it would require my bank signing off on six feet, re-changing those site agreement, redoing everything.
So is this, this isn't common areas of the site condominium?
Nope, this is my side yard. My side yard, yes. So my drive, if you go back to the other page and open a little bit, you can see.
You've got the weirdest shaped property in the city, I think.
I will. So it goes in that side area there. And to tell you the story of this, I bought that lot years ago to protect the side of my house, so nobody could build six feet from my garage. So I bought the property, I split the back off, sold the rest of it then, so that I could keep that buffer, you know, from the neighbor's house to my house. That's why it's kind of in a hot-shaped piece of property there.
Yeah.
Because if I didn't, someone would be six feet from my garage building a 300, you know. So this way, when it's further away.
Looking at that map again, do you have two entrances to your property, then? One to the south?
Yes. That's a, it's not an actual access to my property, it goes to my property, but it's a drain easement property too. If you go a little bit to the southwest, there is a subdivision put in there, and there's a retention pond, and that's the access to the retention pond. So, any other questions anybody might have for me on this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public would like to be addressed, address the board on this matter, please step forward. Seeing that there isn't anyone else, we're going to close the public hearing, and bring it back to Vice Chairman Eisenbacher for an update on communications.
I saw none in the packet, and going through all the papers on the table, I had none also. Just the one speaker that was in favor of it.
We have one here.
Which one?
3340.
Oh. Yes, this is an opposition, this is an adjacent neighbor. And I believe this talks to the point that was already brought up about having a three-car garage attached, and then adding a second garage.
Looks like this person would, well, I'm not going to put words into her mouth, but essentially, she's saying that there should be a six-foot setback period, because that's what's required. So that's that. Bring it back to the board table for further discussion, interaction with staff, or for consideration.
Okay.
Chairman Eisenbacher.
I'm talking too much. If the hardship presented to us is the drain, there's no building restrictions about placing a garage on top of a drain. It's just a risk of, maintenance to the drain would cause big maintenance to the garage. Presumably, that is a private drain, so there would be no city restriction to put something on top of it.
Would the, is there, there's no restriction about rerouting the drain either, other than gravity? It has to flow still?
I didn't look into it. Nothing jumps off the page, but I didn't look into rerouting the drain. Sure, if you, there's a way to do it right. The code would allow it, if you designed it right.
I'm just seeing, having a hard time seeing the hardship for this extreme of a variance in a residential area, where no one else that I can see in the aerial photo or in the area going through that neighborhood is on their lot line.
I would say that's correct. But then you have the petitioner's backdoor neighbor saying that it's okay, and that he's amenable to having maybe like a two-foot variance.
Do I call the petitioner back for his update?
If you would like, you have the right to.
Yes, I would like to invite the petitioner back.
The petitioner can come back to the microphone, please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so since the overhang and the issues identified by the city staff are out there, did you have a reconsideration of how much setback you'd actually like?
Yeah, it sounds like the overhang's going to be six inches, so I feel like two feet would be enough to get back there, walk back there, and do the repairs I need to do. And then in regards to the catch basin, that, since that is the lowest point, it can't be moved, unfortunately, because it would be at a higher point. Because I know there's a question on that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the basin would need to be there, but the pipe connecting the two basins?
Yeah, the basin would be right in the front there, near the corner, but yeah, then the pipe, it could be, you know, just, we're trying to keep it away from the foundation, because that's going to be down 42 inches, and that's lower than the pipe, just trying to eliminate any issues with that.
Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Mataro, is there any reason why, you've got a rather large backyard, is there any reason why you can't move that detached unit closer to your home?
Yeah, that would be too close to the primary structure, I believe there's some restrictions with that, plus we're going to have a deck back there, be encroaching on that.
So another basic dumb question for you. What's wrong with your three-car garage?
Well, I have boats and equipment that's really going to be in the yard, so I'm trying to get it out of the yard and put it inside of the garage, so it's not nice or...
Mr. Lambert.
This is a question from Mr. Evans. How close to his home can he build that detached garage?
10 feet.
Okay.
Right, and then our deck's going to be going out, I think it's 20 feet from the house, too, so there would not be enough room after the deck, yeah.
So would you also need a variance for the deck? Because it seems like the rear setback would not allow for that much.
No, the deck's okay, with the garage reset.
This board doesn't have to act to allow you a 20-foot deck. A variance, it's a hardship with the, that flows with the land, not a want or a desire to have a nice expansive deck, which I'm sure would look very beautiful, but we can't consider...
The other issue is that we have, if you put it on the other side of that catch basin, you have the same problem with the catch basin being in the way.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Okay, continuing the line of the same questions. Looking at the side of your house, the existing garage is that complete side wing, right? Like, you don't have residential space behind it?
Behind, there is, yeah, there's a kitchen behind the garage, yeah.
Okay. So you couldn't just make the existing garage into a six-car garage or whatever?
There's a, I believe there's a code restriction on the size of the garage.
Okay.
Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, I have no idea how the board is leaning, but I wanted to know if you wanted to give the petitioner the opportunity to come back, when hopefully we have a full board here.
The gentleman can make that request at this time, if you'd like.
I think I'm ready to just not wait.
Okay, you can have a seat, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you about the, is there an ordinance, is that the monster garage ordinance in cover? If you wanted to extend his existing garage, would that be prohibited by code?
Ooh, let's take a look here and see what it says. So an attached accessory garage shall not exceed 75% of the ground floor footprint of the living area of the dwelling. So in theory, if you have a 2,000-square-foot ground floor living area, you could have a 1,500-square-foot attached garage, by way of example.
Thank you.
Mr. Keltounis, did you have something?
No.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Evans.
And just to take the lead of some of the, I just want to clarify that the 10-foot setback that's required from the house is not required from an uncovered deck, only required from the house. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lambert.
I don't know if this will go very far, and we'll see how it flashes out when I introduce the resolution, but based upon the information provided tonight, and also paying attention to the excellent presentation our assistant city attorney and city attorney gave us at the last meeting, I don't believe enough of the requirements have been met by the petitioner, so I'm going to move that we deny the variance request.
I second that.
Motion by Lambert and seconded by Gallus to deny this action item. Is there any discussion on the motion at this time? Mr. Lambert.
Yeah, to the petitioner, I don't think we're trying to be difficult on this, but I think, looking at the fact that there was a significant amount of space between both the deck and your home and the backyard, that if you had given us some other alternatives, if, for example, there were trees that were going to be required to be torn down in order to meet the city's setback requirements, I think we'd be more in tune to agreeing to a variance, but we, in my opinion, I don't think there's just enough information here for us to grant a variance.
No, sir, you are not recognized. Are there any other members who'd like to be recognized at this time? Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for the rule to be called.
Mr. Clark.
Just to remind members of the board, yes is to deny the petitioner's request, yes.
Mr. Gallus.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Motion is approved, the petitioner's request has been denied. We move on to item number, not number, letter E, it really is item number, well, I'm just confused now, related to 6772 Westaway. I guess that one didn't get readjusted, because it was the last one to begin with. This is related to a James Williams, and Mr. Evans, if you can present to us on this item.
Yeah, there's several variances requested in regards to adding on to a detached garage at 6772 Westaway. Now, the subject property is in a neighborhood south of South Boulevard and east of Laverne Oi. Specifically, it's on the east side of Westaway, highlighted here in red. And this is closer up of the property. The subject matter involves the detached building that exists in the aerial here. And when I proceed to the next slide, that's going to be their site plan, it's only going to show the northern portion of the property. And there's their site plan with Westaway to the left of the drawing. What he's proposing to do is take the existing outbuilding that's outlined in red and do an addition, which I've outlined in blue. Now, this is what the existing outbuilding looks like now, and he's provided us an example of the direction he wants to go in, that's not the actual one, but that's the direction he wants to go in. And the architectural prints give us even a more accurate idea of the height, the massing, how that's going to look. So the variances he needs in order to proceed, okay, he's going to enlarge the ground floor area of the garage to 2,713 square feet. The zoning ordinance would allow that detached garage to be a maximum of 1,058 square feet. Now, he's proposing a height of the garage to be 15 and a half feet in more than one story. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum of 14 feet in height and one story. So those are the variances he's requesting in order to follow through with the proposal. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Mr. Evans, so on that same note from the previous action item, this is a significant increase as far as square footage that's currently allowed. So how does that meet with the specifications that you addressed to Mr. Desmond's question? The ground square footage regarding the living area, well, I guess it's detached, so that's just, this is different.
Well, and we do have a formula, I can take the board through how the formula works, so...
75% rule.
Yeah, and the 75% rule doesn't apply. This is a detached garage, and there's a different regulation that says, it's two-part. The first one is based on, says that the combined total of all detached buildings, in this case, we have one, can be 450 square feet plus 2% of the lot area. And then the second part of that provision caps that, it could be no larger than the ground floor footprint of the living area of the dwelling. When we do the calculations, the larger the two is, well, is the ground floor footprint of the living area of the dwelling. So he's capped out at the equivalent of the footprint of the living dwelling, so that's where the maximum of 1,058 square feet comes into play, that's how we come up with that. And then, so that addresses that part of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the board? Questions for staff? Call the petitioner forward at this time. Please identify yourself in relationship to the property in question.
Thank you for the time. James Williams, and I own half of the house, she owns the other half. The square footage was wrong on that, I was only asking for 2,320 square feet, not 2,700 square feet. We're doing two things right now. I have a unique property, it is two acres, so to be at M59 in Laverne Oi to have two acres, I'm sort of a unicorn. I have a pole barn now, it's been run down, and not a lot of attention's been given to it. What I want to do is make it bigger, make it nicer, for two reasons. A, for storage, and B, the way it runs now, I have a water problem in the back, most of people that live in Troy realize it used to be swampland, so the whole back of my yard floods from where the water runs. The second part of that, my hardship, is I have a Michigan basement, my house was built in 1965, I have a basement that's about 350 to 400 square feet. You go down there, you have my furnace, my hot water tank, washer and dryer, and a closet, that's it. So being in the colonial, we have about 1,050 square feet, 1,058, I believe, is the exact square feet of our house on the first floor. Overall, it's just shy of 1,900. Long-term, we're actually planning on putting two bedrooms, enlarging the kitchen, and making an addition for about 1,500 to 1,700 square feet, and I actually have the drawings in the proposal I gave you guys. There's five rules that was explained to me, I pass them all, except for the first floor of my house is smaller than the garage I want to build, so that's my problem I'm having. Long-term, that won't be, once I get the addition on my house, the garage won't be a problem. I have the money for the garage, I don't have the money for the addition for the house. To build the garage, it's going to cost me 60,000 to 70,000. The addition to the house is closer to 200,000. I have my 80,000 for the pole barn, that's why I want to do it first, so really, the variance I'm asking for is to do the pole barn first, and I'll come back probably within three years and put the addition on the house. back probably within three years and put the addition on the house. Originally, I didn't ask for a variance on height. Um, we thought we were good on the height. It came after I turned in my proposal. There was a disagreement on whether it was too tall or not. So, I don't know that we need the fifteen and a half feet, but I did ask for it, just because I brought, actually, my architect, Nick. He says we may need it, we may not need it. Um, when we drew the drawings, we were not, we did not have the understanding you can't have a second floor. So, in our second set of drawings that we've done in the last couple of weeks, we do not have a second floor. That's why the picture that we showed you on the first one is not gonna have that big second floor. It's gonna be shrunk down quite a bit. Um, we think we can make it under fourteen feet, but we asked for the fifteen feet, because you guys granted it in the month of May. So, I figured if you guys did it last month when I was here, why wouldn't you do it now? Um, like I said, my setting's unique. If you drive by my house, you don't really see my house. You don't see the pole barn. If you pull in the yard and just take a look, and that's why I put the request, if someone ever drove in the yard and actually looked at this, I asked that, I think, three times in my request, you wouldn't have a problem. Um, I've talked to my neighbors. Um, the one mistake I did make in talking to my neighbors, I told them I would not have to ask for the, the height variance, 'cause at the time, I did not know about that. So, um, as you can see, I talked to all my surrounding neighbors. I talked to eighteen of them. Anyone that could see it, touch it, anything like that, I did not tell them about the foot and a half variance on the height, 'cause I didn't know that was a problem. Um, the two people that affects most, the guy behind me, him and his wife and his mother actually own the lot behind me, so they don't care. They said, "Listen, we'd actually like it, 'cause it gives us more privacy in the winter. We have a bunch of shrubs back there that hide us in the summer. In the winter, we can actually see each other's kitchen, even though it's, he has two acres, I have two acres. It's a distance." Um, he says he's okay with it. The only one concern came from my neighbor to the east and north. He's, he just wanted to know about drainage. He's worried about me flooding out his garden. And I told him, "Listen, we've talked about that with the architect. I've talked about that with the builder. Um, you come over and inspect. If there's a problem, we'll fix it." I try to be a good neighbor. I think they'll show with eighteen of my neighbors saying, "Hey, they have no problems with it." Um, that's my biggest concern, is I don't wanna upset nobody. I have a unique property, and I'm trying to do something unique. That's, once again, I ask for people to show up and look at, 'cause if you actually put your eyes on my property and walk through it, you say, "Ha-ha, I see what he's doing." If you sit up here and compare me to Maple in Livernoy, I understand why you're telling me no. So...
Okay. Any, uh, questions for this petitioner?
One quick question. The future potential addition to your house, that's for another fifteen hundred square feet, or just a total of fifteen hundred square feet?
It'd be additional fifteen...
Additional on top of it?
Yeah, I'm looking to add, make the kitchen bigger and add the office and master bedroom.
The new home will be twelve over twenty-five hundred square feet?
It'd be about thirty-two to, it'd be thirty-one to thirty-three hundred square feet.
Mr. Evans, would then that put him in compliance?
Yeah.
For the size of the garage? They would be complying at that point, right?
I'll do a quick calculation on the, uh, lot area.
But the garage, when he showed that, showed twenty-seven. I'm only asking to move it from twelve hundred square feet to about twenty-four hundred square feet, just shy of twenty-four, but it's...
Not from twelve hundred. It's one thousand, fifty-eight, according to...
No, that's my house size, the first floor of my house.
Right.
The, the pole barn's already twelve hundred square feet. I'm looking to make it twenty-four-hundred square feet. And then, my problem is my house is only a thousand, fifty-eight square feet. That's the variance I need, is my pole barn will actually be bigger than the first floor of my house. That's the problem I'm running into. My yard's actually big enough to fit it, and I pass every other test, other than my house is a thousand, fifty-eight square feet.
So, while Mr. Evans is doing this calculation, and he'll report back to the board, what you're, you're requesting simply can't be done within the, uh, ordinance, namely, uh, trust me on building down the road when I have the resources and I have the inclination and I have the desire, um, and give me a variance on the full project, but you, you haven't put down a cash, uh, you know, bond on the fact that this project is gonna happen. Not that we can even accept that. There's just this promissory note that I'm gonna do all these great things, and, uh, the fact of the matter is, is that, uh, the, the, the law is quite clear. Mr. Evans has, uh, shared with, with us, uh, tonight about that. And, uh, but what you're asking for is...
I'm asking for the variance tonight. I'm not worried about the addition in the future?
No, let me finish, please. I was speaking. Thank you. Um, what you're asking for is, uh, to build in the city of Troy on your terms, and dependent upon what you determine should be the case, not based on anything other than that. I heard a wish. I got money for this. I wanna do that later. I don't know that this will ever even come about. I have no idea if this project proposed, it's not even a proposal. And I'm sure, I'm sure that, uh, there aren't, you know, you said you, uh, shared some, uh, information with the city. That's great. You can talk about building Disney World, too, uh, here in Troy, but the fact of the matter is, is that that's not necessarily, uh, what is, uh, required of us to act on behalf of the citizens of Troy.
I'm just asking for the variance on the garage, with or without the addition.
Mm-hmm. Okay. But that's not what you shared.
I didn't mean this. I'm nervous. Apologize.
Mr. Evans?
Okay, based on, I, I don't have a survey of the full property, but we do have some dimensions indicated in GIS. It appears the property is three-ten by two-eighty. So, two percent of that is one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six square feet plus four-fifty. So, what the code says is it's either that percentage or the square footprint of the house, whichever is greater. So, when he enlarges the house to exceed what he's asking for now, um, that will comply.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other members for this petitioner? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna open the public hearing on this matter. If you're a member of the public who'd like to address the board of the matter, please step to the microphone. Please step to the microphone.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could, I misspoke. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, I said the reverse of what needed to be said. It's maxed out at, uh, two thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. So, the first portion of the ordinance says the combined, for clarification, the combined, the floor area cannot exceed four hundred and fifty square feet plus two percent of the lot area. And then, it goes to say, however, no instance can it be any bigger than the, um, footprint of, of the house. So, we, so if somebody were to build, I'm just gonna make some ridiculous numbers, of a ten thousand square-foot home that's a ranch, they would still be limited to the area calculation based on the lot's size.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you for allowing me that clarification.
Public hearing's open, sir, so you'll have a seat, please. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Edward Van Rosson, resident at six, seven, four, five, Westaway, twenty-eight years. I enjoy living in Troy. I love it here. And I've come to support Mr. Williams and his plan on building a larger structure. He's, uh, he's been a good neighbor. He's conscientious. He maintains the property. I see no reason why he would not continue to maintain the property. He's improved the property. He's improved the house. He has a need to, uh, store his boat, a travel trailer, and lawn equipment, which he has quite a bit of, naturally. He's on two acres. It's a heavily wooded lot. Uh, shrubs, the, the structure in question, it'd be barely visible in the summer from the street and Westaway. So, I guess I'm just asking you to, to consider the variation he's requesting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other member of the public who'd like to address the board on this matter?
My name's Dean Cox, and, uh, I'm at, uh, four-twenty-five, East Level. I don't have a property line that's common to his. I think there's one lot between us. And, uh, that property has been there. It's been a, a big garage for as long as I've lived there, thirty-some years. And I don't even see the place. Like he says, from the road, from Westaway, you can't really see it at all, even as large as it is. And so far, uh, Mr. Williams has, has kept the place up, done a fine job with it. There's no reason for me to feel that doubling the size of his, uh, barn, or whatever you wanna call it, making it look like he, he's drawing it up, I don't think that's gonna be a problem to match the house. You go out in, in these outlying areas, and you see barns and, and outbuildings that are twice or three times bigger than the houses. And I know it's different than in Troy, than some of these other places, maybe Rochester Hills or farther out. Uh, but I don't see anything wrong with it, as long as they're, they're, they're done, built upright and, and, uh, attractive, kept up. And I don't see any reason why Mr. Williams wouldn't do that, from my point. And I, I'd recommend that you consider allowing him to do that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And any other member of the general public who hasn't spoken yet? So, we are going to close out the public hearing, and I believe the petitioner, uh, would like to be, um, recognized. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to ask if the petitioner has anything to add.
Sure.
I know I turned in a lengthy, uh, application, about a hundred and sixty pages. Um, is there any way you guys concurred to about page forty-four, I believe it is?
What does it say on it?
Um, it should be the addresses of the property, and it should have all the surrounding houses compared to my house.
Here.
It's a map site from the city that shows my address, my size of my property, and all my neighbors, and it has okay on all of them.
Oh, okay.
It's about forty-two to forty-five.
Yeah, I think that's from, uh, page ninety-eight.
I know. I gave it to him in a desk, and mine, it was page forty-two, forty-four.
Would you like to just address what you have there, or would you?
I do have it, actually, if you guys wanna see it.
Would you like to, Mr. Evans is working towards... Is it said here, sir?
That's it.
Okay.
Those are all the neighbors I went to, just to show them my plans. I've shown them my plans, told them what I wanna do. Those are all my neighbors that this affects, that can see it, that could have a problem with it. Um, I didn't go to sixty-eight oh-five because I did not know them. And four oh-five, Level, he is a renter, so he told me he wouldn't feel comfortable saying either way. Um, that's the first part. The second part is, I put in my application a legal precedence. Um, in the month of May, last week, you guys approved, or last month, you guys approved a nineteen hundred square-foot garage on point-three acres. Um, it was actually Don Bartlett. I know him. I've actually been to the address. I actually put pictures of it. And comparing what he is doing, you guys made the right decision. His made sense. If you actually walked on my property, and that's the one reason I keep asking, if you guys actually walked on it and seen it, you would look at it and say, "This is unique. This is different." Um, so, the legal precedence part of that, I wanted to put. The conscientious part to my neighbors, I wanna put, um... Leave it at that, I guess. I'm nervous up here, so I apologize.
Uh, are there any other questions for this petitioner?
Thank you.
I would have to disagree that there was a legal precedent that was set by that action that bears our hand down on this one in a, in an affirmative vote. We have the, um, power through the city charter to approve or reject it, not based on what we did last meeting or last year.
But he pretty much said, "Hey, I wanna build a garage bigger. I'm retiring in two years." You guys said, "Yeah, go ahead. It makes sense."
Factoring in a lot of things, including hardships in the property, and I don't see the, the hardship here related to your property.
He didn't have a hardship either. I don't wanna debate, because it does me no good. There is no...
Sir, I'm, I don't need to hear your rendition of our meeting.
It's on YouTube.
Okay, that's fine. I was here, yep.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't mean to get in a war of words. I've had a hard time with Paul in the past, so I'm defensive. Um, you know...
Paul's very professional.
Well, we can debate that, but that's, that's the reason I'm...
Why don't you have a seat? Thank you very much. So, bring it back to the board for attention on this matter, either for further dialogue, further inquiry with the city staff, and/or act, possible action.
I have maybe two cents worth of discussion here.
Yes, Mr. Goss.
I guess there's two different metrics going on here. One is based on the lot size. One is based on the home size. In my mind, I think the exceptional characteristic is more based on how big the lot is, it's two acres. And so, regardless if there's this addition or not, I think that the lot size should be the focus of our decision. Um, and if you do look at the metrics based on the lot size, he's only off by about one-hundred-and-twenty feet.
I agree with that. I think the spirit of the Monster Garage Ordinance, which is at the center of this, is based on that being in a conventional subdivision where people overbuild, and this, this isn't a conventional subdivision. This is a two-acre parcel in Troy, which is a rarity. Um, so, I think that would override the, the lot size, would override the, the house size as a, as my main testing metric, 'cause, I mean, you've got a lot of space in a two-acre lot. So, uh, regardless of whether or not he's gonna do anything in the future of the property, which you can't, I don't think you can add that into the variance, provided in three years, he rebuilds his house. But, uh, I mean, just having that amount of space, and, uh, I could only imagine the amount of material, lawn equipment and stuff that you have to store to keep, you know, two acres in check. So, I agree with you.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Okay, the first thing I was supposed to do, when you bring this back to the council, is talk about how many people have communicated with us. Going through the packet, I see nineteen of his neighbors, based on that chart that is on the screen right now. The, in the subsequent pages, they each have a signed item stating that they're in favor of the, uh, the variance change. So, there's nineteen, and no one was in opposition. One thing I'd like to add to this is that, um, I agree with the statements about it being a exceptionally large property relative to the garage. It doesn't have any impact on the neighbors, but also in our ordinances, we don't want visibility of travel trailers, of boats, and that's what the purpose is. So, if you don't want the, uh, the toys visible to the neighbors, you need to have enough space to store the toys.
I'd rather see a barn than a boat.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right. You have to have a place to store the toys. So, um, I believe all of our five criteria are met, um, with the hardship being that, um, the property, property limitation, basically, of, uh, of our ordinance, um, it doesn't, it's not scaled. The hardship is our, our ordinance is not scaled to get up to twenty-four hundred square feet. Um, the height, though, I don't completely agree with, uh, a variance for the height, 'cause even the Monster Garage didn't need a variance for the height. Um, so, I'm very open to the square footage. And that was, I believe that was... I lost the page. The items contained within the request was the square footage and the height, I believe, nothing else.
I believe that the square footage of the petitioner requested is different than what's published here. So, Mr. Evans, can I address that?
Yes. Uh, I believe that the discrepancy comes from the covered area that's not actually enclosed, the overhang.
Oh, that counts?
Yes, that does count. So, that's included in the city calculation. Because it's roofed, it's considered an accessory building, so it's considered a floor area.
Okay. Well, with that explanation, I'd be in favor of the twenty-seven thirteen, then. Is having a carport on the side of it, essentially, it's also good for lawn equipment? And such.
And what was your statement about the, the height? You...
I'm not in favor of the variance for the height.
So, you're saying that you would support a maximum fourteen feet?
The ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not an absolute fourteen. That's the average of the P.
Right.
As defined in the ordinance.
Excuse me. So, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert?
I don't know if that was a motion by Mr. Eisenbacher.
I don't know if that was a motion by Mr. Eisenbacher or not.
It was not.
Okay.
I didn't take it as one, so...
Then, based upon his statements, I'll make it a motion that we approve the variance for the 2713, is it?
Right.
That's my motion.
But there's a secondary part that he addressed, is it?
That's not my part.
Okay. Okay, is there a second to that?
A second.
Motion moved and seconded for approval based on the petitioner's request, I would like to, I mean, I think, for these type of issues that come before this board, I think the height issue is the greater issue, and the size of the parcel is, needs to be factored into everything. So I would, I'm really in spirit with Mr. Eisenbacher on that, and I would like to make a motion to amend the motion, to say that the 2713 square feet would be approved with a maximum of fourteen feet in height for a one-story structure. That's, even if this motion is approved, then the main motion becomes that motion for final consideration.
I don't believe it's needed.
Yes, because this states that to allow the garage to have fifteen-and-a-half feet in height, and mine would be to have a maximum of fourteen.
But the ordinance is fourteen.
But...
Unless we grant a variance, it's going to be fourteen.
Mr. Evans, can you address that?
Say that again.
Mr. Motzing, I...
Yeah, yeah.
The applicant's, the applicant's request is for fifteen-and-a-half feet in height, correct?
Yes.
Right.
If, I understand Mr. Lambert's motion, he was just moving to approve the size variance.
Oh, I see.
And, which means if that's approved, the size...
Okay, I understand.
Is approved, but it's still, you would have to comply with the fourteen feet.
I would, I was interpreting it as the full applicant's request, and Mr. Lambert has been more specific. So I, since my amendment was not seconded, I will just withdraw it at this time. So the motion, so the motion for consideration before us is for a variance of 2713 total square feet or footage, and of course, the ordinance would kick in, and it'd be fourteen feet in height. And that was moved by Lambert. Was there a second on that?
Yes, my second.
Mr. Desmond, seconded, yes. It's properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion by members of the board? Hearing done. Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Igals?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Motion is approved, and the petitioner has a portion of his variance granted. So we move on now to item number six, communications. Mr. Evans, could you please address to the board the email that you sent to me today just prior to the meeting?
Yeah, we were advised by the city attorney's office a few weeks ago that zoning board of appeals member, Alan Neal, had submitted his resignation to the board.
So we have a vacancy now on our board, and the city council will act in their own time to consider a replacement.
Please forward nominations if you have to.
Then we move on to item, or any other communications?
None.
Okay. Item number seven, miscellaneous business. Is there any other business to be considered here tonight? I don't, Mr. Lambert, yes?
Just because Mr. Neal served on the board for a long time, just to appreciate his service and look forward to the city council hopefully quickly appointing somebody to fill this vacancy.
Yes, absolutely. I know he's been traveling quite a bit for his job. I don't know if there was a job change in that situation, but that makes it difficult, obviously. And I certainly appreciate him for his service as well. He was chairman of this board, and I served as vice chairman during his tenure, so that was a pleasure. Move on to public comment, and are there any comments by the public who would like to address the board on any matter that wasn't on the agenda tonight, or a matter that was on the agenda? And seeing that there aren't any comments formally by the public in general, we'll close that portion out. Just bring it back to the board table for any other issues?
I just got one comment, just for the record. I just want to state that, Mr. Evans, I've only seen you be nothing but professional. I know you have a fairly difficult job. You have to deliver bad news to a lot of people. So I just, for the record, wanted to state that I have, my experience with you has been very professional, and I thank you for your service in a fairly difficult position, so...
Thank you.
And if nothing else, we are adjourned until our July meeting. See you then.